You ready?
Yeah, we're good.
All right, it's 6:33. So we'll call the Halifax Board of Selectmen meeting to order. It is Tuesday, June 22nd, 2021. We are being filmed by Area 58 and will simulcast out on Zoom. So first up, let's pledge allegiance. Okay, has everybody had a chance to approve the agenda? The only item is we have a notice of a complaint and injunction for relief. We were served with a federal court case 1:21-CV-11039. Do we add that into executive session or do we have another meeting about that?
Put it on the meeting for Friday or meeting Wednesday. So I just wanted to discuss it Tuesday today because you didn't know that. The agenda is posted with the items that the chair reasonably expects to discuss during at least 40 hours of pants. Obviously, there's a payment a half hour before the meeting. So you're certainly allowed to go into executive session to discuss this. Okay?
Okay.
So with that addition to the executive session section, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
My motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, first up, we have selectmen events. So there's a regular session, May 5th, 2021. Only myself and Mr. Emilius were present for that meeting. That was during the Building Facilities and Needs Subcommittee. So we would have to have a motion so I can make the motion to approve. But where the two other members weren't present.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, aye? Okay. Next up, we have regular session, May 17th, 2021. So everyone had a chance to approve, to review?
Nope.
My motion to.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous?
Okay, you ready for me?
Yep, we need the motion to approve the warrants and commitments.
So I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments. School warrant number 123 for $507,079.17. Do you want me to skip the payroll one?
Just, I'll just abstain from all of them.
Payroll warrant number 124 for $844,611.62. Vendor warrant number 125 for $214,852.53. The withholding warrant number 126 for $248,108.64. Our ambulance commitment from 5:31 to 6:06, 2021 for $21,846.1. And our ambulance commitment from 6:07 to 6:13, 2021 for $48,627.55.
I just think you need to re-read the number for the withholding warrant.
The withholding is $248,180.64.
Okay. So there was a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, I recuse.
I move to approve the following warrant. Payroll warrant number 127 for $253,976.72. The vendor warrant number 128 for $66,123.29. And the withholding warrant number 129 for $83,645.40.
No second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I recuse. Okay. Ashley, now that I read the folder.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I move to approve payment of the following selectman bills dated June 22nd, 2021. The town hall electricity for $988.53. Insurance for $800. Selectman expense account, WB Mason for $13.51. There's a law bill for KP Law for $2,279. And I think that is all.
No second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
I recuse. Okay. It's 6:39, Charlie.
You're arguably looking for me.
Yes.
Yep. Sorry about that. Dees, what you got?
One of the sirens. Line item transfers. Can I just list them in the agenda? Do you want to go through each of them? Or you can approve all of them at the same time, it's up to you.
Do you want me to read them?
They should be read into the record, yes.
Okay, so we have a line item transfer from fire training to fire ambulance supplies for $4,000. We have a line item transfer from fire wages to fire chief's salary holiday, $443.50. We have a line item transfer from police wages to police training for $5,000. We have a line item transfer from police wages to police chief wages, $402.58. We have a line item transfer, recycle office expense to recycle clerical, $545. Line item transfer from snow and ice to street lights, electricity, $3,000. Line item transfer from recruit and employment cost to town administrator for $250. And line item transfer from recruit and employment cost to selectman clerical for $130. Charlie, do you want to just give us an overview of what the majority does?
Um, no, I am not going through each of them at this point. The explanations and such are.
You want me to go around?
Well, I know that the police chief and fire chief.
Were for Juneteenth.
For Juneteenth.
Yeah.
So those are those two.
Town administrator was longevity.
Right.
And then selectman clerical.
Like those are the Juneteenth.
Juneteenth as well?
Yep.
Snow and ice to streetlights, they just have to assume the bills have been higher over the course of the year. And was budgeted for.
Okay.
Recycling office expense are expected probably Susan needed to work a few extra hours during the year. Police training, police wages, police training, these for additional ammunition for the police department.
Okay.
Ambulance supplies might be simply that again, they ended up needing more supplies over the course of the year because of all of those.
Okay.
I'll move.
I second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Hammond put down also swim lines at town beaches.
They're up now?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna, we may discuss that again, we were getting, we had a complaint about feds skis earlier today.
Okay.
So I don't know if they're out far enough, given the, we've got low rain tonight, obviously, but the pond's a little lower than normal, so that people have to all walk farther to swim, which then they run into the rest of the skis operating in the area. And told, talked with Scott and they said, no liability to look and they may be able to adjust where they are. And then Hammond's two road opening permits.
I know because we can hear that. So the one that we're, it's about, not the 100th Lake Street and then the other one that I can hear that. But there, just, um, we're four by six road cut to get in and back to service at Landmark Street.
So motion to approve? Still move. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Should we go sign that one?
Yeah, I'm gonna sign that one down.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to go to the next thing right now, your appointments start at 6:45. If you want, so you've got basically a minute right now before you talk about the host community agreement for Flower and Soul. Or you can wait, we were going to have an appointment at, we still have to talk with Peter D'Agostino about possible retail facility con elevated routes, but he has postponed to July 13th. So you may want to talk about.
So why don't we do that?
Right.
Okay.
So 6:45, yeah, the agricultural commission up the reappointment by Sheila O'Handley and Joanne Smith. Jimiss Hayward, who I believe is on as a remote attendee, filled out a talent bank form. Aside from the reappointments, we have two vacancies for alternates at this point. So it's up to the board as to how it wants to handle those appointments. And I don't know if O'Handley and Miss Smith are here, as I mentioned, Miss Hayward's on the remote part of the meeting.
See Janice? Hi, Janice.
Hello.
Got you on. So the speakers on the laptop. Seeing that. Do you want to just give an overview of the agricultural commission and why you're looking to join?
Um, I actually don't know much about it. I was asked by one of the other members if I would be willing to join because I do have chickens and obviously I have a background with horses, so.
Okay. Smith's, Smith or Miss, or Handley on? Janice, did you attend one of their meetings yet?
Um, they've not had one yet. They were supposed to have one last week, but they didn't have, it didn't happen.
Okay. Good. It's the board's pleasure.
Tell the two applicants on, on one's feet.
I don't believe they're, I don't see them on. I see a call-in user. iPad too.
Well, the other two, Charlie, they're already on the board, correct? And you reached out to them and they want to stay on the board, that's what the Y means, right?
But the board had indicated that it wanted everybody to come in. Well, I would move that we appoint Joanne, Janice Hayward at the agricultural committee.
Do you want her as an alternate? Because it says there's two vacancies for alternates.
If that's was available.
Janice, is that fine with you?
That's fine with me.
Okay, the motion to include to reappoint Sheila O'Handley and Joanne Smith?
So move.
Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor, aye? Unanimous? Okay.
So.
Thank you, Janice.
Thanks.
Buildings Act. We don't, the committee is basically, they've been on hiatus for another year, but early, it indicated an interest in serving, but she had other commitments tonight and wasn't able to come in. Well, I don't know whether you want to carry that over to some other meeting.
Why don't we carry that over to another meeting?
Okay, so you want to get, so we're starting to run ahead of the schedule, so if you want to go to the next item on the host community agreement?
Sure. So we have the HCA to vote on and the police chief has also sent letters for.
This is an email. Dear Select Board, I'm sending this document to be read into the record if the board wishes on behalf of Heart and Soul Dispensary. Is it Heart and Soul or Flower?
Flower and Soul.
Flower and Soul. Okay. Specifically that Brian Wall and his staff have been in constant contact with me and are going to work with me to ensure that there are no traffic issues that come up and should the board approve their application to open the business on Puma Street, they have been very accommodating and open to all my suggestions to assist in the safe traffic for motorists and customers. I have no reservations that this will change once they are open to business. If the board has any questions, feel free to please contact me, Chief Jobs.
So the board had a chance to review?
It's a difficult decision to make whether it's the chief and local county council, the city of fabric, stuff of any kind, so that it can be fixed. And why not?
So you're okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay. Ashley, do you have any comments on the HCA?
Okay, with it.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the HCA for Flower and Soul?
Still move.
Second? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. That's approved. Thank you, Brown. Expectations are high.
Yeah, we'll be in on this here. Well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lee. We've still got a couple minutes.
Yep, so the next up, we have National Grid LED Streetlight retrofit program.
And Steve had asked that if we carry over to July 13th, he's looking at the possibility of town purchasing the streetlights and then having them retrofitted. Okay. On the sporadic power outages, I need to get back to National Grid on the recent complaints we've had. That brings us to the electrics, electric charging stations proposed for town fall. If any, by us, we have approved a reserve on transfer for any cost needed by the town. Given that, I recommend approval of the contract with the state for the installation of all street parking stations here. It should be a traffic problem that what we're doing is simply converting one of the parking spaces here so that there'd be a charging station in the back of parking lot.
I'll move it. Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous?
Um, redraw colony communication center, the intention by Duxbury is not to change the assessment that we're, that the town's paying from fiscal '21 to fiscal '22. Duxbury is working to establish funding through a separate enterprise, but I guess we need special legislation to do that. The assessment for fiscal '22 therefore would be $150,086.37. Recommend approval and request that Duxbury send help acts and interministial agreement for fiscal '22 as the current interministial agreement expires in a week or so.
Okay, is there a motion to approve? Uh-oh. Is there a second? Okay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Just we have an updated site there for 63 Carver Street. It's here on file, I'll say, this is going to continue the public hearing to July 1st for this application. Beautification committee, we had received a note from Kristen Lobstrom, who has resigned, that will create a vacancy on the committee. Want to send the letter?
Send her a thank you letter. Okay. Aye.
Hey, hold on, hold on. All right, so Warren, you're on the phone with Matt?
I muted him. Um, beautification committee, so we did that, okay. Council on Aging, Marjorie Smith wrote to say that she does not wish to be reappointed, she was coming up for reassignment.
Okay.
And next, let's see. Pam had received last week a letter, email from Jessica Montsky of Thompson Street. They have a blind driveway, they're on a turn there on Thompson Street. They'd like to get a blind driveway sign put up near the corner, make people wear the driveway. Also, the house next door is not currently lived in, nor it's in livable condition. The yard issues near the street are completely overwhelming and starting to hang into the street, making it more difficult to see who we're trying to pull out. They're asking if the town can do anything. My, Pam has already sent to the traffic committee about, I can do a drive-by in the meantime. On the vegetation, plenty of vegetations within the boundaries of the right of way, then Steve has full right to go out there and do the trimming if necessary without a commission from the board right there. On the side edge, you would go to the traffic safety committee, Pam's already sent that.
Okay.
And Pam already has informed Ms. Montsky that it was being, you will all get a copy of this, but also the traffic safety.
Okay.
Uh, status of inspectional car, so we have a car here for town hall, it's usually used by the border assessors or for help other departments in the building. The transmission needs some serious work, about $4,000 worth. It can be driven, but the transmission's probably gonna be, won't go at any time. The fire chiefs said that they, we could trade in 2014 in essence, we'd have to declare it surplus to get disposed of it, but we have a 2016 that they are repainting for civilian use. It should be from the back of the body shop by the end of the month and could be used for that purpose. Replacing the 2014 and we'd be getting rid of 2014. Is the board interested in doing that? Is there?
You want a motion to declare the 2014 a surplus and to?
Effective when we are ready to replace it with the 2016, yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
So move.
Second? All those in favor, aye? Okay, unanimous?
6:55, beautification committee.
Beautification committee.
And you have Adrian Barclay, Michelle Barclay, Jeanne Kling, and Amy Truup up the reappointment. Jill Ripley had filled out a talent bank form. She is recommended, we have a letter from the beautification committee recommending her. There's at least one vacancy now, I guess there's two vacancies on the beautification committee, so you could reappoint everybody and then, I don't know if she's, you're right.
The members from beautification committee here? Do you guys want to come up to the?
Just, if we, if who's ever speaking, if they can get close to the mic, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think it is.
One of the lights doesn't work, so both will do.
Yeah, got it.
Do you guys just mind introducing yourselves?
Jeanne Kling, I'm the chair of the beautification committee.
Adrian Barclay.
Michelle Barclay.
Jill Ripley.
Thank you guys for coming tonight. Do you want to just give an overview of what the beautification committee does so that?
Um, we do different projects to try to keep the town beautiful. We do two cleanup days, one in April and one in October. And we have a few other projects that are kind of ongoing, like Adopt a Plant or where we have plants all around town. We do, we also left talking the memorial garden outside town hall. So we're responsible for that. And we have a few other maybe initiatives in the works for helping incentivize people to pick up litter around town.
Okay. Is there anything that you would like the residents or the Florida Selectmen to know about the beautification committee and how to help you guys?
I think just, you know, picking up litter and trying to just keep, you know, especially your residential areas as clean as possible. We've had, we have a resident who has done a lot, Shirley Graff, trying to raise awareness. And she actually has a, an idea that's good, that if we got, trying to raise more awareness as the year goes on. But I think that's our main thing, you know, I think with the residents, just trying to be aware, you know, trying to clean up after yourselves and for grandfathers if you can, is really our message.
Okay.
George, I've seen her work around town, I know she's doing a good job.
Thank you. So I think we wanted to be reappointed hopefully, myself and Adrian, so we had it till, Jill worked in Monday or yesterday, but Barclay needed, so we looked like trying to, just go in there.
Have you had a road blocking trash yet?
She says.
I don't know, but I'm already.
I do daily pick up trash, every time I walk, every morning, and I bring a bag with me and a glove and, you know, if it's really gross, I use the glove, if not, I use the bag. And if it's too small, I don't bother with the bag, I just pick it up, take it with me. So, you know, some days it's more than others, but I've always felt that it's important to have a clean and beautiful town. And I've always wanted to be a little more active in the town, but not super big into politics. So this seems like a good fit for me. Yeah. I'm a smart girl.
Okay. Thank you guys for coming in and speaking and letting the residents know what it is that your committee does. Is, so we have up here, we have, is there a motion to reappoint Adrian Barclay, Michelle Barclay? Jeanne?
King.
Jeanne Kling, Amy Truup, and Jill Ripley?
My motion.
Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Trucks at Carollyn's Landing, another, we had reported from Chris Weyowitz. Another two are trying to cut through using the Laurel Circuit streets. He had contacted myself and Marilyn McCall. Carollyn's Landing properly responded, there's no action by the board needing, just that this is continuing to be periodic, but not constant problem there. The board has three complaints that are received, one by David Massio against Margaret Seltzer, another by Margaret Seltzer against Amy L. Truup, third by Tracy Rinaldi against Amy L. Truup. For all three complaints, I'm recommending the board, unless it tends to use town council to investigate the complaints and council has done this before, contract of reform. Contract of reform since Regina Ryan, discrimination for asking solutions. Firm can determine the facts of the case, whether the complaints are justified. If so, make recommendations as to how to proceed, funding would come from a law account.
Would the board like to handle this on Friday after dealing with the appointment for the town council?
I'd rather have some recommendations from town council. Because someone's too close to the individuals.
Okay, so we add this on?
Sure, Brian. Yeah, we have time, as long as I can post it by nine tomorrow morning. It can be added to the agenda, so I'll add all three?
Yes.
Okay. Pine Street Bridge Project Engineering Contract Amendment for $26,700. Due to additional engineering work due to soil conditions around the bridge site, funding would come from the town's road account. Say corresponded with Steve about that. If the board wanted to approve. If the board wanted to approve the amendment to the engineering contract.
A motion to approve the amendment for the twenty-six thousand, so seven hundred? So a second?
Okay.
Uh, all those in favor, I? Alright, okay, unanimous?
Uh, let's see, three fourteen Plymouth Street Site Planner Review, this is for inside storage, this is the building behind Rodney's. See, hearing is on July first with the planning board, so this is our new file. Um, the board had received a number of letters from Mr. Moore's eighth grade civics class at Silver Lake Regional High School. They had written about various issues um in connection with Halifax or neighboring towns. Um, I'm not sure what the board wants to do in terms of a sort of response, obviously, school now is now a session, so the students aren't there at this point. And you know, if the board wanted to send a letter to Mr. Moore, or the school might be able to distribute to the students, or take some other action. And then, and obviously, there's, you know, the students have read about a number of subjects, the board wanted to go through them and actually write back concerning matters that the students raised, they could do that too. It's the board's feeling. The data list. Well, we have copies, I can make copies for the board.
You guys do have copies.
So I, I did speak to Mr. DePio and offered to come in and go and speak in the civics class next year. I think Troy has gone in to speak before. Correct years ago. So I, I think um with my discussion with Mr. DePio, I said that I think the elected officials and appointed officials would be more than happy to go and speak in the class. Um, when they sent the emails out last week, it was like a barrage of them, like they all had the assignment due at the same time. So there were a number of issues that could be considered, like they were looking to do work inside the courtyard at the middle school. There were some other issues that were more outside of the board's spec, the board of selectmen's spectrum. But I think um I think if we wrote back a letter to Mr. Moore and thanked him for having the students actively participate and contacted board selection, let him know that the members are more than willing to go in and speak.
I think that all of extend itself to the board in the department, health board. We got some of these, we have that brought in order, the health board, just an issue of conservation. Okay.
Is there a motion to send a letter?
My motion.
Just a second, all those in favor, I? Okay, thank you.
Oh. The town clerk had received a petition article where the petitioners were requesting that the article be presented at town meeting in the future concerning the buffer zone around the restaurants for coin licenses, eliminate the buffer zone. They did gather more than a hundred signatures, but they did not gather two hundred. So the petition does not force a town meeting. However, whenever we have a next town meeting, more than likely the day after Labor Day, the article will be on the warrant for that purpose. But since the zoning article, we do recommend that the board send this to the planning board, so the planning board can have required public hearing on the matter.
Is there a motion? Are there any other zoning issues they need to deal with?
Not yet.
Should? Are they, are they required to hold it within so many days once we send it to them? Should we?
I believe they are, but I can check, I think it's like forty-five days. When the board's required to also send it to the planning board within fourteen days of receiving.
Okay, so is there a motion to send? Alright. All those in favor, I? Okay, unanimous?
Uh, finance committee, uh, last night, the finance committee had received word that Martha Hall had resigned from the finance committee issue plans to move to Plington. Uh, I believe we have two active talent thing forms right now, the finance committee, the board had already interviewed Michael O'Brien. Um, and I didn't know whether the board also wished to interview Todd Dargy and if so, when. The, this is one of these joint votes, well not joint, but all the members of the committee, of the finance committee and all the members of the board of selectmen each have one vote. So the votes can be done on a separate basis, you don't have to combine me. Happy to set up something whatever way the board wants. Take it as own affairs, because we already have you the other candidate for the. And when would you want to do that?
Can we do it when we move the, did we move zoning?
You haven't done, you haven't actually talked about the ZVA thing yet.
Maybe we can pair that together with that.
Okay, so let's go back to the ZVA. Um, I had been asked to cut off a meeting in essence, so that we didn't run into the course of midnight. Um, so the ZVA interviews are going to be some other, um, it's some other board meeting, did you want to do that on the twenty ninth? And then I'll add the finance committee with Todd Dargy.
That's next Tuesday, right?
Next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Does that work for you, Troy? Yeah. We'll do that that way. Uh, just appointment updates, um, we had scheduling conflicts for tonight's meeting. Um, Minnesota School Building Committee, Scott Rico, parking clerk, Kimaducci, and Rec Ken Drow. Um, Jerry Fitzgerald has something in notes saying he's not asking for reappointment. We wanted to the unification committee, and Susan Wallace can continue to serve as a matron without a conflict of interest as long as the board approves of that, in sense of her serving both as town clerk and as matron, she got an advisory from the ethics commission.
Does she have a form that we have to sign off?
I don't know whether she has to do disclosure of some sort, I can ask.
Okay.
Um, the next committee, I'm running out of things on the public session here. Uh, the next committee offer was going to be cable TV advisor committee at seven fifteen. Uh, appointments are up for John Chivone and Richard Wright. Uh, there are pre-vacancies in addition to the reappointments. Um, I don't think they're either here, they're all, we're also a little bit ahead of schedule, so I don't know what to bear to.
Mr. Wrightson? Dick, do you want to?
You're here, sorry. I don't recognize people out there now.
Oh. Good evening. Hi, I'm very well, how are you? Good, take two hours of the couch.
Um, Mr. Wright, would you be willing to speak about what the cable advisory committee does? I'll probably pull the mic, one of the mics.
I've been on the committee now for at least ten years. I was on the last time when we negotiated licensing agreement with Comcast, which was uh ten years ago. And I guess next year we're up for renewal. I believe in community programming, I think uh having the cable uh here at the selectmen's meeting, at the finance committee meetings, at town hall, during the uh town meetings, uh different programs at the school, I think it's important to get out. I, I don't believe that Facebook is the way to uh get across to the community what needs to be done. I, I think people actually have to see it, I wish more people would intend. But uh I started with the cable committee way back when uh um, I can't remember who it was before Comcast, but Bob Bull was very.
It was Adelphia, and then there was Harry.
John. Adelphia, right.
John.
And Bob Bull was very uh involved in the town and uh was the director of the studio at the time. So I got involved in uh videoing some of the programs that we had in town, parades and so forth. And when the position for the cable committee came up, I decided to volunteer my time. So I'm asking to be reappointed again this year is going to be an important year because we're going to be undergoing the negotiations. Carver has been negotiating with Comcast for at least the last two years, trying to settle their agreement. But it's not going to be an easy process.
Anyone have? You guys have any questions?
No, John, what's your take?
Um, well, my take again is um I, of the group that negotiated a good um deal the last time, Dick and I are the only ones that are left. We have the experience doing it, um, and it is gonna be a protective um negotiation, I'm sure. But um we, we've, we've been through it before, we know with the help of whatever training that we get, we, I'm sure that we can come up with a, another good deal for the um ongoing studio, I, our representation in the ongoing studio in Halifax.
Is there anything that, so you guys are have three vacancies on the committee, is there any specific, you know, type of person that you're looking forward to join? Or is there?
Uh, perhaps somebody that feels strongly about uh community programming. Uh, that likes to see these selectmen's meetings uh on cable, the school committee meetings on cable. Uh, we've also invited uh high school students uh to put together programs that we could air over the local uh cable channel. Um, I think those things are important to the community. So anybody that, you know, has a, a passion or a feeling for this, I think is more than welcome to join. Uh, we don't meet that often, it's usually once a month, uh not during the summer months, it doesn't take a big commitment. But all hands are welcome.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions for John or Dick?
Uh, I was liaison for the cable committee advisory board. And over the years, I've seen them do good work, see the reason why they shouldn't be reappointed.
I think we just need to wait a minute for the appointment of the appointees. Is there anything else that you guys, uh, do you want to tell us where the studio is located and how that?
Sure, the uh, the studio is down in Carver, um, we have a one-year lease?
Yeah, one-year lease.
One-year lease. Uh, we're looking for, we have a good deal where we are. And uh it's just past forty-four, down behind the CBS, there's Cornerstone Restaurant there, the studio is there. We've been there now for at least five years.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we are in conjunction with uh Plington and Carver. Um, one of the biggest holdouts with the Carver licensing deal is their capital money that they're looking for before, because they want to maintain their community programming. And uh the studio is, is good, we'd like to be able to try to save money if there was a facility or a place available in one of the town buildings, uh we've been checking that out. But if we have to stay where we are, it wouldn't be the worst thing in the world. We don't feel it's a, a long commute for anybody that lives in Halifax or somebody from the other end of Carver. It's pretty centrally located, ideally right in the heart of downtown Plington would be perfect for everybody. But we don't live in a perfect world, so we, we can make arrangements for that.
When I was in middle school, they were in the middle school building, right?
They were.
Behind like the music and the auditorium.
Right, yep.
In Carver.
Yes.
I remember them being over there, they did a lot of stuff with the kids morning, like meetings on all the, I'm gonna age myself, the TVs up in the corner. It was really cool, the kids got to go in, we got to go do stuff and video stuff, it was really cool.
That was very convenient for the people of Carver.
Yeah.
Right, but when we merged together, it uh, we needed something more compatible for the other two towns.
Yeah, well, and you can't, I guess, have just random people from town walking into the school, you're like, work, that school might not be the best thing.
Right.
I do remember it being though.
Yes.
Very small.
They called it cat?
Yeah.
Yep, yes. Good. Thank you both for coming, uh, is there a motion to reappoint Mr. Chivone and Mr. Wright?
My second.
All in favor, I?
Bye.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Talking about the committee.
Look forward to working with you again, thank you.
Thanks.
This is Jill Henry for the agriculture commission.
Oh, hi, how are you?
Sorry, I guess we're a couple new flight, I don't know.
That's okay.
Oh, gee.
I left your man behind.
Great, you're with somebody with a kick?
No, 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 not today.
So I guess what we're just looking to do is get the board of selectmen and the residents more information about what it is that your committee does and how the board of selectmen and the residents can help you guys.
Oh, great.
So if you want to talk about what your committee does and.
Sure. We're um, basically, we are here to promote, protect um farming interests in the town of Halifax, educate. Um, we did start up right after town meeting when we got approved, what was it, five or six years ago, I guess? Um, we started, and then we had a few members dropping out, so we had kind of a hard time. We did best practices for horses, for chickens, and we got involved with some volunteer type things where we brought in some horses and ponies. We gave pony rides at the town hall, and we gave, you know, money to, I think at that time it was the playground or something donations. But also, we brought in the four H, um, and brought in rabbits and goats and different animals so the kids in town could see farm animals and that sort of thing. So um we're just very passionate about farming and having Halifax our very rural community and having access. And people who don't have huge acreage capability and even the um the talent to be able to take care of a horse, whether it's, you know, you might have an acre or two of land, you might want a few goats, chickens. Um, so we did best practices for horses, I think that's online now with, on the town website. And best practices for chickens, because a lot of people started to get interested in raising their own chickens so they could have eggs and so forth. Um, so people are interested in this sort of thing, and there's quite a, quite a few people that do have animals. We also would like to get um, not just, I'm a horse person, myself is, Julian is, she has a big farm. So we'd like to get more people on that are farming, like cranberry farmers or um some other, you know, um types of farming. And we also um are going to set up a meeting with the board of health because there is new laws now that um actually, if I'm correct in all of this, um, they want the board of health to consult with the agcom on different types of situations that involve farming in town.
Okay.
So, because there's a lot of confusion with it right now. So there was a webinar, I think, I don't know, last week, before. Yeah, Suzanne, um, who's in on the agcom, actually was um a participant, and then she sent me the information. And I listened to it, it was, it was quite long, it was like an hour and a half or so. Um, that dealt with different communities and different towns in the state and different people interested in agriculture. And that are on agcoms and different, um, board of health as well. Um, and getting these people together and, and discussing the new law that came out, I think probably Charlie's. He knows something about that too. Um, so we're trying to get together with all these people and, and get things going. Right now, we do need more people on the agcom because we have three, four, four of us. So we need six, and of course, four to vote, so.
How often and when do you meet?
We just started meeting because, you know, along with the fact that we lost members, um, there was only a couple of us for a while, right? And we were trying to get back into it because, and then with the coronavirus, we just, everyone just kind of backed up, you know, we just had nobody um having.
How would you like it to go though, so that we can? How would you like it to go though, so that we can get more people involved? What, how often do you want to meet and when?
Once, we were meeting once a month, originally. And we were doing a lot of work, you know, in the background and, you know, setting things up and figuring out what we exactly wanted to do. And how it would benefit the town and the Board of Health, because we really wanted to work with the Board of Health, because they're the ones that come in with the complaints, you know, whether it's somebody's chickens running down the street or, which is actually a big one. People, and that's why we said the best practices, because, you know, people need to know that not only do they have to keep their chickens fenced, they need a roof, you know, so the hawks don't get them and that sort of thing. So that's why we set up the best practices, because at that time, a lot of people were doing that, you know, so. But there's a lot we can do and there's a lot coming up that's happening as far as the law goes and things, so. So I guess once a month would be a great. We're in the process of getting a report, which immediately the AdCom decided it was the six of us and two alternates. And then several resigned and went in a different direction and then and so then Sheil and I basically, you know, there were only two left being interested on the board. And so we're kind of trying extremely hard to get it all over again. So.
Well, thank you for what you're doing.
So we voted earlier tonight for Janice Hayward to be an alternate, should we make her a full member, is that what?
I think so, that would be good, yeah.
I'd move that we stand that earlier vote for Janice. And then we appoint her on a full-time position.
My second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you guys for coming in, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for serving our town. Okay. We've got 7:20.
Capital Plan Committee, Michael Zarella is up for the appointment. Along with being interested in the FinCon, Tom Dargie had indicated interest in serving our capital plan. I think that Sandy Nolan's hope is that whoever Finance Committee and the Board chooses the other person for finance, that the other person will be serving on Capital.
Okay.
But you could appoint, reappoint Michael through line two or.
Yep, is there a motion to reappoint Michael Zarella?
Gordon, is he here or on Zoom to talk?
I don't see him.
No.
I don't see him.
Okay.
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
My second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And then Charlie?
I guess at the next, that 29th meeting, I guess a vote for Capital Plan.
Right.
At that meeting.
For Sir Turek, do you have Tom Schiller up? I didn't see, I don't think he's here. But there's, you want to reappoint him, you could do that.
What's that?
This is Dr. Sheik for Capital.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Do you want to come up? We're talking about capital now. Thank you, chief. Hey, you want Gordon Andrews?
Hey, nice to meet you.
This is George Yarran, attached to the assessment. So you filled out a talent bank for Capital Plan and Finance Committee.
I did, yeah, that's correct.
I listened to the interview on Finance Committee last night.
Okay.
Very impressive resume and and I think you'd be a wonderful addition to the town in whatever manner you choose to serve. I don't know if you want to tell the Board a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, sure. Okay, sure. Yeah, so I mean, I mean, the purpose why I'm here and also why it expressed interest is just to, you know, help the town. You know, definitely enjoyed living in this town and just looking to kind of give back and, you know, do my part to help make it a better place for everybody, so. I actually stumbled upon the openings, I was actually looking for some information to renew my dog's license, which come into you, so. Stumbled across, you know, some, a posting regarding some open positions across the various communities and things of that nature, so. I have a lot of experience in the investment management space, you know, I have a degree in, well, a few different degrees, I have an associate's degree in accounting and then a bachelor's in finance, and then actually just wrapping up my master's degree in business administration, so. I have spent about the last 17 years, I guess, in the investment management space, largely in like mutual funds and investments and things of that nature. Managing an investment fund accounting team, servicing the GE Pension Plan, which is a, you know, massive plan, multi-billion dollar plan. And then also, you know, leading mutual fund spaces across various clients, did build a team on fund oversight, the Transamerica Asset Management down in St. Petersburg, and then I relocated back to Massachusetts back in 2013. Took over some positions at State Street, leading multiple clients in the Treasury side, leading, you know, budgeting and things of that nature for, you know, vast clients and some of the biggest in the industry like Franklin Templeton and things of that nature, and then actually took a role at JP Morgan where I am now. I, back in 2017, onboarded the BlackRock Business, which was the largest transfer in the financial service industry, I was over a trillion dollars in assets, so managed that onboarding. And currently sit as a Global Control Manager across the organization overseeing, you know, teams, Singapore, India, and across the United States, so. So I have a vast, you know, experience, I haven't, I've never like served in a town setting before, so this would certainly be new to me, but as I mentioned on the call last night, you know, I definitely feel like I bring, you know, a good, you know, sense in a first set of eyes, I guess, to, you know, look at things from a different perspective and add to the diversity of the team here, so.
So you did finance and capital planning?
I did, yeah, I did apply for both.
Your schedule can handle doing finance?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure just, you know, what the commitment would be as far as, you know, frequency, time commitments and things of that nature, but, you know, I do have the flexibility to work from home, so as I mentioned, I think it came up on the call last night. You know, if and when there's meetings, as long as I know in advance, I can certainly make myself available and, you know, certainly during the pandemic where, you know, I've worked exclusively from home and just right around the corner, so. So, you know, no concerns with popping over and participating, you know, and I'm here to volunteer my time too, so. Happy to do, you know, whatever's needed. I'm sorry?
How long have you lived in Halifax?
Good question, I think I, so I moved over, so when I moved back to Massachusetts, I actually lived in Pembroke for forty years and a half, so I moved to Halifax in 2015, so about six years now.
You ever heard of more about town meetings?
I'm sorry?
Town meeting?
I've never, this, I've never attended one, no, no, this is my first time coming in, so. In fact, I wasn't sure how to get up here, it came in the back way through the elevator there, so.
Sounds like you would be a good fit for either one, Capital Plan or Finance Committee, but it sounds like you're more into finance.
Yeah, I mean, that's my background is in, you know, finance particularly, but, you know, I'm happy to, you know, if, wherever you guys think that, you know, I could play a a role, I'm happy to help out, so I'll leave that to your discretion, so either whichever is a better fit from your perspective, I'd happy to, again, happy to assist and volunteer my time.
We've got the interview done, then we just have to vote in the next meeting for FinCon. The Finance Committee commitment basically is the second Monday of the year.
Okay.
Like 6:30 or 7:00 until 9:00 or 10:00 at night, every Monday until the second Monday. There's a couple off Mondays, but basically, you go through, everyone's assigned a liaison to a different department earlier in the year. So you work with the department head to find out what's going on with that particular department's budget, see what issues they have, what issues they've been dealing with long-term. And then you come back and you basically report, you don't, you don't act as a proponent of the department, but you come back and you, you give information of what you thought about, basically.
Okay.
Through the process, this, we would have all the department heads come in, present their budgets to the full Finance Committee. And then discuss, you know, what money's available and how to try to fund the budget. Budget is the way we do it in town, so we usually use all the operating budget, it's basically the real estate, personal property tax, local receipts, which are ambulance revenue, excise taxes, you know, another big one.
Sure.
So that basically funds, basically the operations side, and then the free cash number, which at town meeting we call undesated funds, is the money that's basically turned back over to the town from the previous year of what wasn't spent. That's how we've been funding all the capital plan purchases.
Sure, okay.
So that's kind of a quick overview of how we've done that. We were taking the mail stacks, which is about $80,000, and trying to use that for capital, but because of where we are, operations, we, especially, we pulled that into operating revenue. So we are against a budget crunch this upcoming year and could use some outside the box thinking.
Sure, okay.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, not at this time, no.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, chief.
Chief, in fact, you're up. You have, you have made an actual appointment.
I have.
Journey event?
Somebody else did it for me.
I kind of did.
It was a surprise that I am here to be a senator, so.
Should I come out?
Are you gonna, you gonna get us run down the last list that happened, or?
No, this charity event is. So basically, I was approached by members of the Board in regards to doing some sort of a town-wide event. Currently, it's in the initial phases, so the location is to be announced, the date is to be announced, the time is to be announced. And the talent or it's, again, still in the initial phases. Basically, it was to do some sort of charity event with some of the proceeds being donated to the familiar, a family in Worcester. The Worcester police officer that tragically died, trying to save the poor young boy in the pond. And also, the foundation that purchases best for canines, after what happened to the Braintree Canine. So those would be the initial two charities, we're looking at. Again, it's still in the initial phases. We're gonna probably reach out to people to get some ideas, get some volunteers to try to do something. And I spoke with Ashley and she brought up maybe Walmart parking lot is big enough in the parking. But again, open to suggestion.
We're thinking probably sometime in August. Trying to use the Walmart parking lot and bring in kind of like a, I don't know if you've been to Carver Night Out or Kingston Night Out, but do like a Halifax Night Out where we can bring in surrounding towns and our own fire, we SWAT vehicles, maybe the horses, things of that, to get families to come out. We thought it might be fun to bring out a dump tank.
Yes, we have some ideas on some people.
Volunteers that we can have people to dump. I know we have some volunteers inside of the police and possibly the fire department that would volunteer to get them. Maybe we can get some other officials and use that money towards what we're raising money for. So it was just the preliminary stages, get your input, ideas, thoughts. For the, but probably sometime in August, more than likely Walmart's probably the best case scenario for them bringing some of your vehicles. So we're gonna have to kind of be flexible with what they have to offer and then we can bring it back to you on the date. Probably Thursday night or something like that, I think we're thinking something like that.
Kind of pushing it back to August because the library has transportation night, I think on July 19th. Kingston has their National Night Out, August 3rd. And I think Carver's right that same week, I think, so we don't want to, you know, have too many events.
Yes.
So then you get July 4th and so, so we're looking at August sometime.
So you're looking to create a committee and put you two on it?
Does it need to be a committee?
Well, is the money coming, I guess just because the money, is the money coming through the towns conference, is this a town event? Or is this a private group holding it? It is, then all you're doing is giving whatever permissions you need. If the money's coming through, then you need, whether it's the Selectman or some other committee even add up to be the ones approving getting the budget, giving agreements and everything like that and actually writing the bill of works and such to send to the county. So anything can be done either way, I don't know which way you want it.
Guys want to think about that and get back to us?
Yeah, let's figure out the message.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, I mean, if we have to form a committee with, you know, form a committee.
Hopefully this will be something that catches on and maybe we can do it yearly, try to bring some community event to Halifax with our first responders and get families out here and involved, so. Looking to the future and see if it catches on with the best.
Yeah, I mean, like I know that Tiki Yarran did an event that was real successful. I mean, if we can like, you know, maybe combine everything.
Yeah.
Now, I'm sure we can, there's plenty of people out there that have some good ideas, so I think should be a success.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
I just wanted to vote you two into a committee tonight.
Yeah, I'm sure you did.
You should know we signed you up for the dump tank.
Yeah, I'm sure you did.
You're gonna be the moneymaker.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Ashley. Did we vote Tom to serve?
Not yet.
Okay.
Tom's maybe away for a couple weeks, he's still asleep.
So move Tom, who's five.
Is there a second?
My second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Your next series of appointments starting at 7:40 was with the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
I don't know how you want to handle that, Mr. Fitzgerald, if not, was not interested in being reappointed. Mr. St. Croix had a series of conflicts for tonight, I believe his email to me indicated he was also at conflicts for next week. So you're left with two additional appointments at 8:00 and 8:10, I don't know whether you want to vote them out or take a recess and wait until late.
Are they here?
One of them, I think, is, yes.
Wendy Greco? Do you see her on?
I don't see her on the board.
We have her listed to 8 o'clock, so that's 20 minutes.
So it's another 20 minutes.
Okay. Want to take a 10-minute recess, stretch?
Sure.
We can do the other five chief of police.
Yeah, we could do that.
This way, yeah?
We, oh, I think, I think we have time for you guys.
I'm not sure we go out of order, Gordon.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Yima.
You guys want to go to the mics again?
Well, use up some time.
I'm one of the next.
Do you want to just tell us about what the?
So Emergency Management does the planning, response and recovery for man-made and natural disasters. Most of what we focus on, what takes up the most time is the planning. Over the past several years, we've had some changes, we were initially, you know, we, the biggest thing, I think, for a small town is sheltering. So, you know, we went from having a shelter in Halifax to working with other communities in Plumpton and Kingston to develop a shelter in, at Silver Lake High School. We've, we established that and then the three towns reached out to the Red Cross, and we got the Red Cross to provide staffing for that, so. Sheltering is our top priority. Over the past year, we also renewed our designation as a local emergency planning committee. We were previously part of a regional emergency planning zone with seven other towns, and unfortunately, that kind of fell apart, so we rewrote our emergency comprehensive plan, went in front of the state and got that approved. So we reestablished our local emergency planning committee. And then depending on what type of emergency we have, you know, we've had major snowstorms, we've had pre-storm meetings. And then depending on what type of emergency we have, you know, we've had major snowstorms, we've had pre storm meetings. You know, the pandemic, I think, is the biggest example, you know, meeting with the selectmen, I think we met almost daily.
We did for
two and a half months.
Yeah, for months there. And then, you know, working with Sandy to on the recovery end with the the FEMA assistance and and things like that is, you know, that's the major role of emergency management. We also, you know, indirectly oversee the CERT program. Tommy has been the director of that. And anything you want to add, chief?
I think you pretty much at every point. I actually learned something today.
Do you want to just tell everybody what CERT, what the CERT director does, what Tom does?
So the community emergency response team is made up of civilian volunteers. They go through it. There's a, I think it's a thirteen week training program that they have and it teaches them basic, you know, first aid, what to do with downed power lines and how to do some of the sheltering and how to assist in searches and with rehab of major incidents. You know, CERT's been something especially we struggle with because we don't have incidents to really keep those, to keep people involved in that. So it's a real difficult thing for small towns. So a lot of towns have done away with it. It's just diff- it's difficult to keep people, you know, we have a hard time with the call firefighter staff because we don't have a lot of incidents. You know, we look for ways to keep them involved. So when, you know, we're looking at civilians, we only have so many, thank God, we only have so many major disasters. But we're always always looking for help, especially in the sheltering area. You know, even though we have the Red Cross is going to assist us in a major sheltering operation at Silver Lake, if we have to open up the elementary school as a warming center or a cooling center, we're always looking for assistance to help out with that.
Yeah, I just want to add, CERT is very valuable. And it's also like a kind of a financial break to the to the town. So another, like, we actually had to reach out to different neighboring towns to get some of the CERT personnel to help us in Halifax events, like, for example, the the road race. We actually had some of the CERT personnel from from the Bridgewater and I think some of the other towns to help us because we don't have enough people. So I mean, if people are out there that want to help out, you know, contact us and we'll set up a training. Again, it's just it's volunteers, but I think, you know, it it really helps the the town to pay the cost. Instead of having to hire, you know, a detail to block off a roadway, we can, you know, use one of the one of the volunteers to do it. So they're really helpful.
If you just neighboring town, our own people and neighboring towns too, like holidays in Halifax.
Yeah, that's right.
It's just, you know, people with a portable radio who with an extra set of eyes out walking around, let us know if there's an emergency that that happens. It's worked out real well.
Good move that we reappointed Jason Jeter as director and Johnny Shives as deputy director.
My second.
Good. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Do you want us to chief, he wants to do licensing licensing authority agents now? There's no interviews, but we have it on as a list.
So licensing authority agents?
Yeah.
So basically, the appointments are for the the officers of the Halifax and they become licensing authority agents for the ABCC. So it gives them the the authority to conduct checks at liquor establishments, basically provide the ABCC a local resource for these investigations. I actually had a conversation with the chairman chairman of the ABCC in regards to our specials and to our permanent intermittence because apparently in the past, they hadn't been appointed as liquor licensing agents. And he informed me that they should just because there could be an incident where the the two officers that could be working would just be the part time officers, so they would have to have that authority. So I am actually forwarding Pam the list for one of your other meetings to appoint them. But basically, it just acts as an agent for the for the state in regards to liquor establishments and inspections and ID checks and all that stuff, compliance.
Good. And do you want to just cover what matrons do as well?
So our police matrons are tasked with basically providing cell watches for females and juveniles. So if we arrest a female or juvenile, we would request a matron to come into the station to provide basically eyes on that person until they get transported to court. If the person is ill, as we transport to the hospital, the matron would go with that person, maintain basically control of that person. So it alleviates the burden on to having a full time officer can conduct those duties. You know, we've had we've had, we've been pretty successful with the number of matrons that we currently have. Janice just, Janice and Amanda were just appointed last year. So they act because we were kind of down on on our numbers. And they basically available at an all time, all time of day and night to to respond to the station and provide those services.
And then do you want to just explain what a special police officer is?
So the special police officers are police officers that supplement the role of our full time officers. Right now Halifax is eleven full time officers and nine special police officers. Yeah, nine. And so those officers basically have all the powers and duties of a normal police officer. But they just provide supplementary force to cover shifts, to work details. So it gives the town, it's it's a big benefit to the town because obviously if we didn't have those offices, we wouldn't be able to fill our shifts. I think I've spoken with the board before, despite of the place board, but with police reform coming down the pipe, we're gonna have, you know, we're gonna have to make some harder choices in regards to police, special police officers. But that's for another conversation. But so basically, they're there to assist the officers in, you know, filling the shifts, doing road work, any of the duties that a normal police officer would do. But they're, they don't, you know, they don't have the benefits that, you know, a full time police officer.
Does anybody else have any questions for the chief? Thank you for explaining
Thank you.
all the appointments. So is there a motion to approve the licensing licensing authority agents as printed in the agenda?
No motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay. Is there a motion to approve all the matrons with the what was that, a disclosure form from Susan Lawless?
I motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. And is there a motion to approve the police officers as printed? Special police officers.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. We also have sealer of weights and measures, traffic enforcement assistant, Mr. Eldridge.
He hasn't responded to Charlie, right?
Right, but he's also, I mean, he's extremely chief. Yes. Officer Eldridge from Bridgewater, East Bridgewater?
East Bridgewater.
Yeah. I mean, it's he's specific to the truck enforcement.
Yes, so I didn't realize that he was up for reappointment. So I haven't reached out to him. I don't, I don't, I I think he would have said the appointment if he was so appointed, but I can reach out to him and and bring him bring it back up at another meeting.
Okay.
Basically, what what his skill set is, is he's a DOT certified police officer. So he has special skills and equipment to inspect truck trailers. Obviously, it's a specialty. You know, I mean, most laypeople, they look at a truck, they're like, wow, it's a big vehicle. But there's so many different statutes and laws that govern, you know, the the maintenance, legality of it being on the roadway. So we've had some, you know, numerous complaints in Halifax about you know, either their jack braking or speeding or no muffler, stuff like that. So I had reached out to to Officer Eldridge since he was certified. And he came down to do a to do an inspection last, well, two summers ago, I believe it was. And in order for him to, because he's got like special scales and measuring, he had, he was appointed as a the special seal of
Weights?
Yeah, weights and measures. So that's what that that position entails.
Okay. Is there a motion? Do you want to hold off and find out if he wants to be reappointed?
Sure, he wants to be reappointed.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any others on the list that we don't have appointments for? Does Neil St. Croix here?
No, he was not.
Oh, yeah, that's who you said was.
Yeah, he's serious of conflicts. You know, he's still interested, but just could not make it tonight.
Good. Why don't we take a five minute recess? Okay, call the meeting back to order. It's eight o'clock. Is Wendy Greco here? Hey, Wendy. Do you want to come on? Come on up?
Hi.
Hi, how are you? You coordinators?
Hi.
Troy and Ashley. Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on the conservation commission?
Yeah, well, I'm really interested in the environment and I love our town. I think I wrote that on my application. I don't have any specific like experience in terms of environmental. But for me, I'm just, I'd like to volunteer for the town and help.
Okay.
Yeah.
How long have you been in town?
We moved here in oh, oh five, so sixteen years.
It's a long time. You've been to a town meeting?
I'm sorry?
Have you been to the town meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Have you been to one of the conservation meetings yet?
No, no, this is like a whole noth experience for me, so, yeah.
Okay. I believe they typically meet on Tuesday night, correct?
Correct.
Is that an issue for you?
Tuesdays? No.
Okay.
Not at all. What what generally, what are you looking for in terms of what what happens usually at those meetings, I should ask?
So when you've got co co members.
We're gonna ask the vice chair of the conservation.
Okay.
What's your question?
Yeah, I'm just asking, sort of, what are you looking for for somebody to be on that committee? And what usually happens? What would you discuss? I mean, obviously, it's about conservation, but.
It's about conservation, but it's about a lot of other things also. We do have bylaws in town. Some of our bylaws are a little bit stricter than other towns where we have a fifty foot no touch zone between whatever they're working on or whatever they want to develop and the wetlands. Sometimes we go up to a hundred, that's basically where we start at. There are variances that are given, just like in the board of zoning, you know, for building things on the properties and that. But the board of five, so you have to have at least three to have forms. So as many times as people can show up every second or fourth Tuesday, that's important. There are certain things that have become out of our jurisdiction as far as the the wetlands go and that. Once we go past the end of the property and go into the lake or something, it actually becomes the police department's area because of permits and everything for like docks and things of that nature. So it's a little bit different. And then sometimes where we run into certain species, like when we do the solar fields that have become very popular in Halifax now, simple little things. So we all learn to keep the fence up six feet for the turtles and the animals can get under there and keep going through. So mostly, it's a learning process and we all learn and we all, we all keep learning as we go along. So and our secretary has been tops in reminding us of certain things during the meetings. So we don't claim to know everything, you know, because we are not conservation agents per se. We're just volunteers in town, you know, trying to make everything as smooth as possible for people who come in and want to live here.
Ashley, do you have any question?
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. Take Mr. Mazzio early if you like.
How you doing?
Do you want to just tell us a little bit about your interest in conservation mission and?
So I've been in Halifax about five, six years now, so I'm just here to volunteer to help the town. My interest is purely to help the town. That's a volunteer position. I wouldn't be here if I wasn't willing to give my time up Tuesday's work. If that's the day. I don't know a whole lot about conservation. I briefly went over the bylaws. You know, I I understand, you know, this this stuff that I've dealt with over the years, whether, you know, working construction. You know, I understand some of the stuff, but, you know, I don't think it's anything worse than baking a cake. I mean, you gotta read the rules and get help from people when you need the help. So share the volunteer.
Troy? Ashley, any question?
We've not, we've been to town meeting, question?
I have been to a number of towns.
Have you attended conservation?
I have not.
Okay. Do you have any other questions on the board? No?
Yeah.
Thank you. So Mr. St. Croix did not get.
Right, he was not able to come tonight, I believe, if I remember his email was that he had conflicts for next week. I'm sure of that.
Just checking to see what what dates and services are available.
I will not be able to get to the interviews today or this week. So maybe just want to let someone know to create time slots, helping the meetings along. If the board has interest with me, can arrange another time or phone call. It would be an option. So maybe that's available next week. I could try and see if you could come in on the twenty nine.
That'd be good.
Okay. I'm going to
Go ahead.
One second, please. So is the board interested in taking any public participation at this time?
In what sense?
We, there's members of the audience that wish to speak and I'm not sure whether or not that that is a good idea at this.
If you don't mind, I just wanted to advance that. I just wanted to advance with the record that there was also another town, one that was moved from Hacklough. Michael Brien, I kind of had time to be talking to him or Mr. Mazzio from the previous town. And I was trying to get him to say he may still be interested. And I just wanted to advise the board of that.
We have them interviewing for something else, right?
Right, if he's on finance.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're going to hold off until we can settle that? Interview?
Yes.
That's what... Troy, is that a motion? Do you want to vote it, or if you just want to hold off?
It's a motion.
Five seconds.
All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
We did HMA, council on aging.
We're running a little early, but I don't know if truth is here.
Story. Susan, the seal for...
You know, Susan, I talked to Kim earlier, she wasn't, she was going to be able to make it. Again, we're running earlier than...
Okay. So you have, we're early on, council on aging, too. Is there any other...
Issues on the agenda? I can work it backwards in a sense of, well, we've got a bunch of, sorry. Thank you.
I don't see any others, but...
I mean, I'm sorry to say, I would just recommend the other slate, maybe wait until five or seven. Then you'll be behind, but then you can get to council aging, do the story.
All right, why don't we take another fifteen-minute recess? I'll call us back to order at eight twenty-seven. So we have council on aging appointment with Judas Rakowskis. And then we have one, so does that mean we have two vacancies now, Charlie? Or did you include...
I think we now have two, yeah.
Okay. Two vacancies? All right, so is there a motion to reappoint council on aging Judith Rakowskis?
Removed.
All in favor, aye? All right, unanimous? Did Sue Basile say she was...
She did say she was coming.
But it was raining out, she said she might not be coming.
Okay. I was just hoping she could give an overview of what she does, and like, that's, that's why I wanted her to come in, because I thought it would be useful for the town. Is there a motion to reappoint Susan Basile as historian? So, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Maybe we can ask her to come in and just talk about what the...
She shows up and we can ask it.
Yeah. Just think it would be useful for the board and for the residents. So the historic district commission?
Your John had not responded to Kim about being reappointed, so, right?
Yeah, he probably does not access a town meeting, and I don't think he has.
Well, we'll call him again and see if we can get a response. On the historical commission, again, Mason Cook, we haven't heard back, and Kevin Shay was interested in being reappointed.
Okay.
I'll call up Mr. Cook.
Okay. Is there a motion to reappoint Kevin? Again, I think it would be great to have them come in and just tell us what their commission does and what the board can do to help them. I don't think that they can, they're a five-member board, correct?
Correct.
So... It'd be tough to meet.
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Five seconds.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Unanimous?
I know historic, I mean, I don't, Stacy, is that...
Okay.
Holidays in Halifax.
I haven't heard from Tanya.
No, but historically, we never end up hearing from her until it's maybe two weeks before the event.
And the Joe Johnson, though, so, yeah.
Is there a motion to reappoint Stacy?
I motion to reappoint Stacy.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Do you want to contact Tanya again and see if, again, just another, if they talk about what their committee does and what they need help with, maybe we can get them more help around the holidays.
From the Memorial Day Committee, Dave Wallace had seen me yesterday and said that he has not to be reappointed, nothing against the Memorial Day Committee, but I guess he's now more involved in the regional veterans organizations, he has those commitments to make. So he said, no, please don't reappoint me, certainly, I will help out whenever I can. Then you would have Steve and Will still on there, and we can put out, you know, if anybody's interested in serving on the Memorial Day Committee, we can put that out.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd move to reappoint Stephen Littlefield and Will Curry on the Memorial Day Committee.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. I would like to see if they can work this upcoming school year to try to get those essays that, that used to be done, included in, because I think that's a great community building.
I think we should do some sort of parade or something.
So we did have a parade, two thousand...
Yeah, well, I think we'll get back to everything, assuming things go well. We'll have a normal Memorial Day, twenty twenty-two.
It's gonna go.
Okay.
I know that, Bert, I know that both Jerry and Scott were interested in being reappointed to the building committee.
Yes.
Scott, I know I heard from, again, he had conflicts for coming in tonight, which remains interesting. Neil, St. Croix is interested in serving, again, we had a situation where he had conflicts. We're going to see if we can come in on the twenty-ninth to talk with the board.
So on this, we had talked about having Scott directly appoint to the board.
Hold on, what time? Well, this is Mr. Gerb.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Jerry said he was going to be here at the July.
So we're, so we're in a schedule.
All right.
We're ahead again.
Okay.
So we'll hold off.
We can hold off until Jerry gets in.
For parking clerk, Kim had a conflict to come in. I don't want to reappoint.
Is there a motion to reappoint? So moved, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Unanimous?
You did the patrons, you did the special police officers, you did the seal of administration, traffic enforcement, next would be Kazao on the, his town director for the Plymouth County Co-op.
Did he say he was going to come in?
Yes, well, we didn't, we, all we know is he's interested in serving, I didn't get, we put out the note saying please come in, but we're a half hour ahead on him at this point.
Hold on, we'll see if he comes in. I'm sorry, Troy, let me, once you hold off on it, and see if he does come in, it's going to happen, I'll wait.
Okay.
I mean, if the board wanted to, we...
We could move into executive session.
You know, get rid of that, and then be back. Apologize to the people who are here, but we're that far ahead, and people are planning on coming in, I don't want to have a dark town hall, you know? Up to the board.
Guys want to move to go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations with sergeant patrol officers, firefighters, highway, mixed unit, police chief, fire chief, and all the unions at Silver Lake Regional School District, Halifax Elementary. Does the board want to discuss litigation matters that just came in tonight? What do you want to wait until?
I haven't had a chance to read this thing yet.
I think we need to discuss it before our meeting.
With attorney mail? Here?
Yeah, I mean, I think the board needs to make decisions, but if we're going to hold it, hold tomorrow.
Charlie, who sent Larry an email and asked him what time he'd be available tomorrow?
On right for the Wednesday meeting?
If he's available during the day.
During the day, but, okay. Yep, I'll send him a note, got my email up and running, so.
Okay. All right, so is there a motion to go in to discuss contract negotiations as pretty as discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position with them?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
And we will be coming back to open session to continue the meeting at... Lieutenant Jerry's supposed to be at...
Eight fifty-five, I have this.
All right, so why don't we go into executive session for twenty minutes, then? We'll come back at eight fifty-five. Thank you. Just shut the camera, there you go. Thank you. All right, so we're back from recess, it's eight fifty-seven. Next up on the agenda...
Town director.
Municipal and school building committee, Dr. Ricker, and, you guys want? You guys kind of related?
Not a problem.
So I guess you want to tell us what the municipal school building committee does, and try to open the meeting.
Well, the building committees, we've got, I think, seventeen buildings that we have to maintain throughout the course of the year. We're constantly looking at how to upgrade them, any problems that come up. There's, we have a program in there, there were, like, air conditioning units, we've got kind of a schedule, like, every five years, we might wind up replacing them. As far as putting out bids or anything like that, bids go out, we look at them, they come back, we give our input, we try to help Scott and Turner as much as we can, he's very capable of what he does, he's an excellent person to work there. But he's got, we've got his back, and whatever he needs, we're there to help him out. We want to maintain the buildings so that they're functional, they're up to date, and that's, that's what we do. My background, I've got over fifty years' experience in the construction industry. So in, I own a company, so as far as budgeting is concerned, estimating, or looking at drawings, it's not a problem. And I enjoy working with the people that, that are there. They're all, you know, diverse group, very capable in doing their jobs.
Well, I don't have fifty years' experience, but I got eighteen in instruction from starting off in residential to commercial construction, and that's kind of how, why I wanted to get on that board, because of my background in that. That's about it. Questions?
You ever been to a town meeting?
Yes, I have, yeah.
How long you been in town?
Two thousand and twelve, thirteen, something.
You're not a townie yet.
What's that?
You're not a townie yet.
And I'm not? How long does that take?
Twenty years or better.
Twenty?
No, I don't have any questions.
I think some of the things that I want to talk to you guys about, maybe Bert, too.
I'd like to make a chance, so.
I'd like to see Scott try and report directly to the board of selectmen, where we have all these projects, I'd like to see us being the ones that are responsible, with him coming to us and updates once every, we talk about once a month, whether it's at the board of selectmen meeting, or it's at our meeting. So we have, there's more flow of information to the board in less than our projects. Is that something you think can work out, where Scott goes directly to us and continues to work with you guys?
It'd be something, I'd certainly agree with the other members of the board, see what they felt about it. We do meet once a month, for the most, all the time. We have our occasions and different projects in the dark going on, gentlemen, all the members of the board should be to the front of you, giving more impact, you know, depending on the size of that, some wall, or the projects, or whatnot. So sometimes we do meet twice a month, or even more, depending on the surface, I'd like to give him heaven on earth to speak about the votes, and when we're done with the questions, or whatnot, he would mind.
From the perspective of being on buildings, facilities, and needs committee, it just seems like the board of selectmen are not going around and taking stock, basically, of what's going on with the buildings. It's kind of been, I don't know if it's a, I guess it really brought to my attention by how much Bert and I have been talking about school, and how much Scott was coming home from school, I mean, Scott's great, and dealing with the issues over there, and it just seems like those issues with the buildings need to be elevated to the board of selectmen. So I'm not sure if it's a recording structure, or a pass-through data and information, it just seems like, you know, you're on, Scott's calling me, because I'm the chair of the school committee, to let me know about, you know, the backflow, or better, that was an emergency fix, that, you know, he did a great job on, and I just think somehow, that information needs to get to the board.
Would you, if you feel uneasy about that, would you be grateful to have him come and see the board anyway, and just directly respond to us, but let's give him an update on every third meeting or so.
Yeah, that's fine. So if you guys want to talk about that at your next meeting, and just see what the recording structure to the board of problems is, that is probably key, by two cents, especially with the school, it's really quadruple, with Scott's attention, whatnot, I think, I know, you know, we have an agenda, we don't really post on minutes, but specifically, we should make sure that even the board, or whomever, not only, like you say, if passing the information that, or like to meet, you know, once a month, or whatever.
Scott has plenty of time to answer extremely well, that there's something involved, or whatnot, he figured, or whatnot, and maybe on the emergency-wise, give or talk to the school, or whatnot, it's, I'll be honest with you, there really isn't much that Scott can, you know, he's, he's right on top of it, I mean, we were talking about that today as well, but really, it isn't much that came on him for.
You know, the town has really been fortunate. I mean, Jerry Elliott before him was excellent. I mean, he really dedicated himself to the town, and Scott is the same way. I mean, there was nothing he can't do, or won't do for the town.
Yeah, he's done research and project activities.
He's, he's really on top of it.
Scott, I think, is more preventative medicine, or maintenance, that we have, hadn't really seen, I'm correcting from wrong, but that we really haven't seen with Jerry Elliott, it was almost put up the pile, put up the pile, put up the pile. Scott's more looking into the future, as far as, especially with the valve, okay, now we have a spare valve, as has been repaired and sitting there, so God forbid anything like that happens again, we don't have to shut the school down, on especially that, since we were very fortunate, very fortunate that Scott had the knowledge and the wherewithal to be able to get another valve. to, to be able to get him on the bell and get that replaced without having to shut the school down. And I think we were lucky that we had a snow day, kind of saved our lives right there. Scott was right on, on top of things, and Scott's very good, as far as I'm concerned, he tried to be shutting it to reporting to us, keeping us up to date, what he cares about.
Anything that's really important, you get an email from our, get a phone call, saying, look, here's what's happening, so we're up to date as to what's happening, you know, it's going.
Well, I think what, what the issue is, is that you have to send the information to the board, we're asked more in migrating streets, we're supposed to stop meeting, they want to know what's going on with a particular building that has changed, and I'm not an announcer, they...
True, yeah, I mean, a lot of it's my thing, stuff, but I can be the board, but...
As a board, we, we'll make sure that, and if it has to be, we'll increase it, if it's not enough, because that's a big school, if it's from a roof to the library to the unit, there was another window leak there that, of course, we found, light found out about today, although it was leaked from the water, whatnot, Scott already had it repaired, fixed and ready to go before, oh, by the way, you know, he's, he's not a panic guy, you know, what do I do, what do I do, he's, he's the guy that gets it down, he's the go-to guy, and I, I'm sure the other members are crazy with you.
Well, I mean, today at the meeting, he did bring up that the elevator system is controlled at the school, it's on its last, you know, they don't need cops, he's brought it up so they know about it, and, you know, I'm sure that's gonna be presented at the next town meeting, that, you know, has to be replaced.
And that's what we decided today also, that this has to be, like, the board's attention, there aren't, there's no more, no such thing as a spare part for that anywhere, so if it goes, we're a truck, we're a truck.
But I mean, these are things that he's constantly, you know, bringing up to us, so that we're aware of it and, you know, let's, we'll have to get funds for it to get it fixed, it'll be on the next journey, you know?
Certainly, my, I agree with, with, certainly not intentional, maybe, but...
No, no, I understand, like, when you, we go to town meeting, you present the articles, everyone's looking at the board of selectmen, just the buck basically stops here, right? And we don't really know the details of what's going on with projects or what you have to do. Yeah, so if there's, you know, even if it's, if, if it's not Scott coming to us, if it's Bert or, or one of the other members coming to a meeting and just giving an update on, you know, here's the list of projects that have been approved at town meeting for the past, for the, for this upcoming year, where are we on each one of these things? Maybe if you guys talk, maybe if you guys talk about that at your meeting, you could just forward us, like, ba, basically, I'm looking for, like, a project management, like, is it green, is it yellow, or are there issues in the red, basically? Yeah.
Jay?
We can do that.
Okay.
We moved it.
Is there a motion to reappoint?
Could I mention, oh, your gentleman, if you're getting, I, I've worked with old phone, Jerry is invaluable, his fifty years' experience as a life contract, when we put projects up, I bid, Jerry's the go-to guy, he can, he analyzes it, breaks it down, knows exactly what to look at, what not to look at, a handful of details that, like, even contracts, Jerry's brought to the, to the board's attention that, hey, guys, you don't want to put this in there, you gotta protect yourself, you know, it's like deadlines and that type of, things like, sorry, that's a cop, I don't know, you know, Jerry's invaluable, absolutely invaluable. Scott, I didn't know too much about Scott until he came on board, his, his input is, is so powerful that it isn't even, you can't even measure it, and like I said, this contracting experience and whatnot, especially, we've had some big projects like the roof at Pulse Tavern, whatnot, these guys were, were, were great as far as follow-up detail, what you want to look for or whatnot, I, I can't say that, I don't think they contributed anymore, don't think they possibly could, they're invaluable assets to the municipal school building, makes it so much easier, you know, to, you know, in, in, in chairing the board, these guys do all the work, do all, know all the details, they're, these two guys right here are, are incredible, I, like Jerry said before, I enjoy working with them, they're, they're great assets, I mean, the town was lucky they had a gentleman like this, I'll be honest with you. Thank you for your time.
I would move that we reappoint Scott and Jerry to the board committee.
Is there a second?
My second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you guys for coming on.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead and talk to Scott, we'll get something scheduled and set up so we can keep all more up to date.
Yeah, I'd just like to create, like, some sort of scheme where, you know, you guys are looking at, even, even, even if everything's safe, you guys, maybe, just an update.
I mean, beyond the minutes and, and the general, and, and, like you said, if you want to schedule something, whether you need us to fill up a meeting or once a month, twice a month, we, we, we're just, okay?
All right, thank you.
Pleasure, thank you very much.
Veterans Agent.
Veterans Agent.
Assistant.
Did you move it?
Yep.
Trying to move.
Stephen Littlefield, Veteran Agent's Assistant.
Hey, you guys took a side, we guys don't hold on, we just see if he came in.
Nine eleven.
Well, he made a motion.
Okay, so, so we have Little here.
Yep. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is there a motion for Town Director of County Co-op Extension Service?
So moved, moved that Kaziah, that's another one we're gonna appoint.
I'll recuse myself from the vote.
You can call it.
Let you call it, I'll recuse.
Ashley? Yes?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
So the, for Youth and Rec, Ken had said he was not able to come in because of a conflict or, then the other three people, obviously we're talking about Bruce, I hadn't heard back from the PM had, that he's interested in being reappointed, Neil, St. Troy had a conflict, and then we're left with Tina Kenyon and Michael Regnetta, you know, Mike was on the council on aging, and I'm not sure if he's still interested in serving on Youth and Rec. And then we're still, we're back, unfortunately, we'll be on time in a couple of minutes, so if you want to wait a couple more minutes and either pass over those or do whatever you want.
I guess I was just looking for them to come in and talk about the programs and kind of give an update on what they do.
Let us see if you can come in on the 29th.
Well, I mean, I think we can vote to reappoint both of them tonight.
Okay.
And then, they do have two vacancies, so...
Yeah.
We can see if we can, see if anybody else is interested that Tuesday night.
Yeah, okay. So make the, you'll do, so you're making a motion to reappoint Ken and Bruce?
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Unless this is them. I think we've got people coming up.
Uh, maybe.
That may be them. Hi, come on in.
Hi.
Hi, Tina.
How are you doing?
Right up front, right, you're right on time.
Good, that doesn't matter.
Oh, stop it.
So we just have an interview tonight for Youth and Rec. Have you attended any of their meetings or...
So, just finding out that there was a new, there was a Youth and Rec department was news to me.
Okay.
Um, I've served on the board for soccer for the last four years, my kids are multi-sport athletes, like, both of them are playing every sport they can, so I'm often in touch with Pete Barone and Ken Moudro and look across paths all the time, making sure that all the sports aren't on the same nights and everything else, so to find out that there was actually a department in town that would help facilitate everything, I was very excited.
Okay. So, you were also interested in zoning Board of Appeals, correct?
Yes.
Would you be interested in doing both of those things?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Troy, have any questions for?
No, actually, they're all...
Yeah, that's good.
Ashley, any questions about Youth and Rec?
Nope.
Okay, so you're interested in doing both, so it's not gonna preclude you from zoning Board of Appeals. Okay, is there a motion to approve Tina Kenyon for Youth and Rec?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Awesome.
So there's one, there's one more vacancy.
Who'd have put the word out?
So...
Fun friend.
So Neil was interested in that as well.
Right, and we also ended up, just today, we got a McTell bank form from Sarah Nobles.
Okay. Okay, well, there's one more spot there, and... Do you want to see if, well, we already know Neil can't make next week.
I don't think so, but I'll make sure.
So whichever meeting he can make and Sarah can make, do you want to just have them added to that next meeting, because at least now they'll have...
Your next meeting's seven thirteen, on July thirteenth.
At least now they have three members, right?
Yeah, okay, let me, let me get that, let me get Youth and Rec set up for the thirteenth.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if I saw, I believe we've got, we went through all the correspondence, we did our executive session, the road openings, line transfer, seal.
So we, we'll show those up to the Tuesday meeting, the 29th, that's what we're talking about, right? So I guess I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session and talk about the, the verified complaint and the document one dash twenty-one dash CB dash one-one-zero three-nine, just briefly discuss this and ask discussing the strategy in respect to ongoing, respect for litigation and open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position with the town, I would be able to just...
I think we're sort of obligating not to just get the code number.
Oh, all right, it is Robert Piccarelli versus Town of Halifax, Massachusetts, Board of Selectmen of the Town of Halifax, Board of Selectmen, Board of Eners, Official Individual capacities, and Halifax, like, we have to leave the session in our official and individual capacities as defendants, we've served this, well, we haven't technically, I don't think we've been served, but we were notified of this about six-twenty this evening. So I'd just like to go into executive session to briefly discuss this and how to move forward tomorrow.
A motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, I thought we agreed that we were gonna wait for...
I, I just want to talk about what to do tomorrow, timeline after I read through this in the recess. So...
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor, Ashley?
Not going back into regular session.
And not to go back into open session except to Jerry? Regular meeting.
No one else has.
But, sorry, Joe?
No one else has.
And, and no announcements will be made afterwards. Okay, Ashley?
Yes.
Troy?
Yeah.
Myself, yes.